Please rise for the flag salute. Roll call please Lisa. Commissioner Kreebel?
Here.
Commissioner Langria?
Here.
Mayor Holtzman?
Here.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law. First thing we have on our agenda tonight is a proclamation from Mr. Lou Palluti. I understand you had a birthday recently, or you're going to have have a birthday coming up. So, and actually, this is something you probably could have and should have received from the City of Ventnor many, many years before this, but Commissioner Langraft, Commissioner Kreebel, and I felt that it was well overdue. So if you don't mind, I'm going to read it. Is that okay? The City of Ventnor City honors Lou Palluti. Whereas Lou Palluti began his career with the City of Ventnor Beach Patrol in 1945. And whereas Lou Palluti dedicated forty-two years of service to the City of Ventnor, serving as the chief of the Beach Patrol for twenty-one years. And whereas Lou Palluti served Ventnor City Beach Patrol as a leader, coach, teacher, and mentor. And whereas in nineteen fifty-two, Lou Palluti was the rowing champion. And whereas in nineteen sixty-seven, Lou Palluti established the John T. Galley Memorial Rescue Races to honor the Beach Patrol's past captains. And whereas Lou Palluti implemented modern equipment for the Beach Patrol and public safety. And whereas Lou Palluti has a deep passion for sports, serving as the captain of the Atlantic City Football Team in nineteen forty-eight and captain of the Temple University Football Team in nineteen fifty-two. And from nineteen sixty-eight to nineteen seventy-five, Lou Palluti was the head coach of Holy Spirit High School Football Team, leading them to five state championships in nineteen sixty-eight, nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen seventy-three, nineteen seventy-four, and nineteen seventy-five. And whereas Lou Palluti served in the U.S. Army from nineteen fifty-three to nineteen fifty-five and is a lifetime member of the South Jersey Chiefs Association, a charter member of the Vikings Rowing Club, past president of Atlantic City Lighthouse, former vice president of Showboat Casino, and former professor at ACC State. Now therefore be resolved by the City Board of Commissions in recognition of Lou Palluti for years of outstanding service to the city, to the citizens of Ventnor City. Ventnor City Board of Commissioners, Mayor Beth Holtzman, Commissioner H. Timothy Kreebel, Commissioner Lance B. Langraft Jr., September tenth, two thousand and twenty.
Well deserved, Coach. Well deserved, Coach.
Thank you for your service, Coach.
Beth, do you want to pick?
Thank you so much.
Too great.
That a Chief Bergman sighting and Commission Chambers as well?
Yes, it is.
Hey Chief, great job this summer with everybody.
That may be a little while, she's got to get the law sizes.
Thanks Chiefs, thanks both you guys, Chief Bergman and Chief Palluti.
Mayor, tell Coach Bergman and if Norma Lombardi's there that I said hello.
Tim McGuire, Commissioner Langraft, Commissioner Kreebel, they're all saying hello. Hello, congrats, well deserved. You, no, thank you, Mr. Palluti. We ready? Okay, so we did that presentation, well deserved, as anyone who knows Mr. Palluti knows that. We do not have any department head reports tonight, capital was discussed at the last meeting, am I correct?
Yes.
We have no mid in meeting minutes, minin, minning. We have no minutes tonight, we do have two ordinances that we will be introducing. One is two thousand and twenty dash zero one nine, and that is amending chapter two twenty of the code where it relates to water usage, and that's a slight increase in the rate. Ernie, can you just quickly, if you don't mind, just explain it quickly so the public knows why there was an increase?
Good evening, I'm Ernie Graz and Superintendent Water and Sewer. There is a slight increase in water and sewer rates. Safe drinking, they started, the Safe Drinking Water Act mandates that we maintain our infrastructure, and as time goes by, infrastructure has to be maintained. And it's for that reason, the rates have to go up a little bit.
Great, is that the same reason the next ordinance with the sewer water?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's basically maintaining your structure. And infrastructure is very expensive.
I know.
So.
Okay, great, thank you, Ernie.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ernie.
Okay, Commissioners, you okay with that?
Yeah, I was a little, we didn't get to really talk too much about the rates, but now hearing Ernie's explanation, I'm good.
Okay. The next ordinance that we will introduce is two thousand and twenty, that's amending chapter one eighty-six of the code to City of Ventnor as the same relates to the sewer waters, and Ernie just explained the reason, so we're good?
Yes.
Okay, we have no public hearings or adoptions of ordinances this evening, we do have resolutions to vote on by consent. Before I go through them, resolution two thousand and twenty dash three oh one has been pulled from the record. So the first one is two thousand and twenty dash three hundred, and that is accepting the resignation of Brian Nolan, he was an employee in Public Works. We go with that, Commissioners?
Yes. Mayor, the, we pulled three oh one, I thought we had to act on that, is that something Ed asked us to pull?
Yes, Ed asked to pull it.
Okay, all right, I apologize, I am a little remote today and with current situation, I'm a little, little behind, so I apologize.
Don't worry about it, we're good. The next is two thousand and twenty dash three oh one, and that is, excuse me, that is amending resolution two thousand and twenty dash two one two, and that's for the emergency cleaning of the municipal buildings and firehouse number one, and this is all the COVID-related cleaning that we have to do, correct Maria? Correct, okay, we good Commissioners?
All right.
Yes.
Next is two thousand and twenty dash three oh three, and this is amending resolution one eighty-eight of two thousand and twenty, authorizing action janitorial to provide electrostatic spray sanitizing disinfecting cleaning services. Again, COVID-related cleaning requirements. We good Commissioners?
Yes.
Next is resolution two thousand and twenty dash three oh four, and that's amending resolution two thousand and twenty of two thousand and twenty. All right, yeah, okay, authorizing special traffic regulations, loading zones and parking areas for outdoor dining due to COVID. This is us extending it to the end of October, yes?
Correct.
Thirty more days to the end of October?
No, I think it really only affects Red Room and Santucci's and Stella, right Tim?
It says extending it thirty days.
Isn't that, isn't that?
Extending it thirty days after a hundred percent dining inside.
The governor says there will not be a state emergency now, it'll be thirty days after that.
Oh, so this is an open end, correct? You got, okay, that's great, perfect.
It's more of a deadline to break down.
Okay, that's good, that keeps it more open-ended, great, all right, Commissioners, we're okay with that?
Yes.
Great.
Fully support that.
Excuse me, what did you say last?
Fully support that.
Oh, great, yeah, absolutely. Next is two thousand and twenty dash three oh five, and that's approving the liquor license renewal for V and R Inc., which is Florida coal cuts. We okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, next is two thousand and twenty dash three oh six, that's a refund for the fishing pier rental. I guess someone rented it and then they could not use it.
Yeah, the person was disabled, couldn't go.
Oh, okay, okay, so it's a refund. The next is resolution two thousand and twenty dash three oh seven, it's a resolution amending two forty-five of two thousand and twenty, authorizing the hours and hourly costs for parking meters and the kiosk machines within the City of Ventnor, and this is going, this is for the parking lot, correct?
Yeah, it's cleaning enough to make it accurate.
All right, and it's twenty-four hours in the parking lot at two dollars.
Which we had previously done with this overall overarching resolution, had to be updated for that also, okay.
But only the parking lot is twenty-four hours.
Correct.
And we do that because people tend to park vehicles there overnight.
Yeah, yeah, you get activity there, so hopefully that'll eliminate activity you don't want there.
Right, okay, we okay with that Commissioners?
Yes.
Next is resolution two thousand and twenty dash three oh eight, and this is authorizing the city to submit a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty theme of flood mitigation assistance program. We okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Jim Muttella manages that for us and does a good job.
Yes. Next is resolution two thousand and twenty dash three oh nine, and this is authorizing no parking on both sides of the street from Monmouth Avenue to Calvert, beginning on September twenty-first until construction is complete.
It should say Dorset Avenue somewhere in there.
Yeah.
It does say, doesn't have it written here in the paper back up.
Yeah, it's on, it's on Dorset Avenue.
This is, this is to finish the work from the sewer main collapse last spring. We did not want to pave the street and shut down traffic, caused traffic problems on during the summer, so we pushed the reconstruction of that roadway, which will not just be paving. Whether you know it or not, there's a twelve-inch-thick rebar-enforced concrete underbase to that street. That road was originally a concrete road fifty, sixty years ago. So when we repair it, we have to replace that concrete and then pave over top of that, so it's a it's a couple-step process that we'll be going through to do all that.
Okay, great, thank you. Next is point twenty dash three ten, and this is closing out the next bill again. I don't think there's any questions on that, correct?
No.
We will have the approval of bills and payrolls, so the next is, do we have any discussion items?
So I kind of do, I guess I'd like to put it in the discussion, and Maria and I spoke, and I sent both Commissioner Kreebel and the mayor an email. Resident reached out to me last night from Nashville Avenue. We're back with the sober living facilities again. Hanson House has purchased another home in our town and is proposing to create another group home, sober living facility at that location. As Mayor and Commissioner and Maria are well aware, we stepped in and was able to stop a bill that the Senate and Assembly had proposed to make it much easier for these sober living facilities to really multiply in our community, in any community. That was the last winter. So I met with the group from Hanson and had talked to them about not, you know, proliferating our community. We have, this will be our twenty-fourth sober living facility in the City of Ventnor. In my mind, that's an overabundance of them in our community, that is not fair to our taxpaying residents. I'm asking everyone and anyone who's hearing my voice this, call up Senator Brown, call up Assemblyman Mazzio and Armada, Armada, and tell them your feelings on this, hopefully you agree with me. We need to get a full court press to have the laws changed that would limit them like liquor licenses are limited, based on population. Like rooming houses are limited, based on population. Having this many sober living facilities in our community is ruining neighborhoods. You have them side by side by side on some of our streets, three in a row. This is not an acceptable form of development. They have a caveat that Hanson House has exacerbated and used as a loophole to get these facilities. They do not comply with the state standard under the Oxford House model. And DCA has sued them, they're in some sort of settlement agreement negotiations right now, but I don't think it's finalized. You know, I, look, I get what they do is good for people, I get that. Not everyone needs to live in Ventnor, not ever, not everyone that is living in these communities, in these homes, is from Ventnor. These should be spread out into other communities, not in just our city. I think it's unfair, I think she's, she's targeting our areas that where she can purchase properties that are cheap. But now she's even spread into the beach block, so I ask people, I implore people, I will put contact information for our state legislators on our website. I emailed all three of them today and anticipating some sort of response. But this is, this is something that will set our community back. You know, everything we've worked for for the last five years, this will set our community back. And I'm not going to take it lying down, I don't know that I'm going to be successful, but I think it's, you know, I don't, I think we're being taken advantage of, and I'm not thrilled with it, I'm not happy with it at all, so.
I agree with your press plans, and I'll continue that, I'll, I'll, I'll send some emails and letters out as well and ask for some support. I think it's, it just needs to be fair, it needs to be fair, and like you said, distributed among the population, not, not focused in our town on, in an imbalanced way.
Yeah, and she's, they're hitting Atlantic City too, and it's just not fair, they're hitting populations where she can buy big houses, you know, five, six, seven, eight bedrooms and put fifteen, sixteen people in there. That's not what these homes were designed for, it's not what the community and the neighborhood was designed for. You now have fifteen people living there year-round instead of four to five when it was designed as a family.
Right, the parking and the density is not, you know, it's impacted.
It's taxing our services, and it's not fair to the residents who invested in their properties on those streets and have built new homes, and now, you know, they don't, they don't feel it's fair to them, and I agree with them.
New compliant homes with the right number of parking spaces and the right number of full-time bedrooms, and that, so it's just, there's a, there's an, there's an imbalance there.
Agreed.
Like the good, the good work that they do, and it is important, but, but there's got to be, there's got to be some balance in legislation.
There's got to be limits, there's got to be limits within any city, I mean, we're talking about Ventnor, but it's only fair that there's, they should be limited.
So Lance, this is our, how many, this is how many now in the City of Ventnor?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Possibly more, there was, nah, there might be more than that now, they added one on Dorset Avenue too, six hundred block.
And that's been there for a while.
Yeah, so that, we're in the range of twenty-four, twenty-five, which is too many. They're not all, they're not all by the same owner. But there are, there are that many in town, I had, I had the county JIS department map them for us. Again, last winter when I went into the, when I, you know, through Senator Brown's office was able to get a Senate bill that would have given them even more rights to do this work without any approvals, without any local review, and you know, it's, Senator Chris was very helpful, I have yet to hear back from Assemblyman Mazzio and Armada.
Your goal is that it's something that should be per capita and also geographically on the same block, there should be.
Agreed, there should be some distance between them.
I agree.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome, we good?
Yep.
Okay, do I have a motion to open to the public, this is the public portion where anyone in the public may speak on any of the items that I touched on that we, the commission will be voting on in the regular portion of the meeting. So do I have a motion to open the public portion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, Jim, is there anyone out there?
Anybody from the public wishes to speak on any of the items discussed or to be voted on? Please note either in the chat section or by recognize the raised hands and you will be recognized.
Ken, you're okay? No, Jim?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion to close public portion?
They're moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to close the workshop portion and open the regular meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the first is the ordinance introduction two thousand and twenty dash zero one nine, amending chapter two hundred and twenty. Do I have a motion to introduce the ordinance?
Let's introduce ordinance two thousand and twenty dash zero one nine.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call please. Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langraft?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman? Yes. Do I have a motion to introduce ordinance two thousand and twenty dash zero twenty, amending chapter one eighty-six?
Make a motion to introduce ordinance two thousand and twenty dash zero two zero?
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call please. Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Mr. Langraft?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman? Yes. We have no public hearings and we have no ordinances to adopt, so the next is resolutions by consent. Do I have a motion to adopt resolutions two thousand and twenty dash three hundred through two thousand and twenty dash three ten, omitting three oh one?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance by, resolutions by consent, two thousand and twenty dash three hundred to three one zero, excluding three oh one.
Do I have a second?
Second motion as described.
Lisa, roll call please. Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langraft?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman? Yes. Next we have our bills and payroll, Al, can you give us the amount, please?
Yes, for the bill list this period, it's a one million, three hundred and nineteen thousand, five thirty-four, forty-two cents, and payroll for this period is five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars and eighty-five cents.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve bills and payroll stated from our CFO?
They're moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call please. Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Mr. Langraft?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman? Yes. Commissioners, do we have, do I have, you have any announcements or safety report for this evening?
I have a couple of items if I can pop it in, just to wrap up the summer in some ways.
We'll jump down to Commissioner comments and reports?
Yeah.
Is that good? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead Commissioner Kreebel.
That's all right, no, I understand, so the postseason for the Beach Patrol, we were, Chief Bergman was in the, was in the room, but we, we discussed over the last few weeks and had posted that beaches will be guarded from ten to six every day through September twentieth, plus the weekend of September twenty-fifth and twenty-seventh, so that's going to be two beaches east of the I guess north of the Pier Suffolk in Dorset, and then two beaches south of the Pier New Haven in Lafayette, or however you want to call that, your directional. We had a busy, a busy summer like any. There were, just last weekend, there was a lost kid that, that got, the Beach Patrol was coming, the beaches till about seven P.M. and eventually found him. But the rescues had a big spike in July, three hundred and seventy-two in July, if you can imagine, and a total of five hundred and eighty-eight rescues for the season in three months, a hundred and fifty first aides, and fourteen lost children, so as always, a busy season, and hats off to the Beach Patrol and all the officers and guards that do what they do without hesitation. It's a pleasure to watch them and see, and they're professionals. Also in the fire department, we had a we had basically a three alarm fire, I guess that was last week, at a one eleven North Dorset Avenue. Margate, Atlantic City, Longport, Brigantine, and Pleasantville were all providing mutual aid. Fire was under control in about two and a half hours. Of course, it was basically overtook Dorset Avenue from the bridge to all the way to Red Room and beyond. Amazing response, amazing stop, and no one hurt either. There were five patients that were treated by EMS on the scene and no injuries to any of the, of our fire department. So it was a busy end of the summer, as all of, as it always is. And then, just to wrap up, so everyone knows to watch our website, the Farmer's Market is continuing September eleventh, September eighteenth, and September twenty-fifth, from eight thirty to twelve. So that's always one of our best events, it's been excellent, socially distanced, and really well-maintained, lots of, lots of kudos to Andy and Penny and everybody involved, all the volunteers, as well as the concerts, huge success on the concerts, I want to thank Donna and Dana for all their work. We got some stats on that that I'll share later, but that was again, just a great event. Really felt like something that the city needed and was well-executed, so thank you. That's all I have.
Well, that was a lot, and I'm just going to say I second everything you said.
Yeah.
I've got a couple of things there.
Would you say?
Couple of things to update. Again, I second Tim's comments and the mayor's comments, Beach Patrol did a phenomenal job this year when there's some pretty rough, not only conditions in the water, but conditions with, you know, pandemic and whatever.
Absolutely.
This summer, so they did a phenomenal job with that. In lesser good news, well number ten, which is the well out by the school, Lafayette Avenue School, we lost that motor today, they turned it on this morning, ran for a few minutes, and it went up in smoke. Is Ernie still there?
Yes, she is.
Okay, from what I understand, Ernie advised me today that we'll have a temporary motor set up there by tomorrow. We have plenty of water, you know, with people going back to their homes, and we don't have as high a demand right now that we had.
Ernie's shaking his head, yes.
But we're, we're pretty good with that, so we'll have a temporary motor in there, and then we'll have to replace that motor at some point. It's part of the deal, things wear out, we have to replace it. Getting to the pier, we had a record year on the fishing pier, after the opening, the end of June, we actually sold sixty thousand dollars worth of keys. What's interesting about that is we had more keys sold, three hundred and eighty-plus than we've ever had. We collected more dollars there in a shorter amount of time. When we collected more dollars there in a shorter amount of time and at a lesser fee. We reduced all of our fees.
Wow.
Typical one seventy-five down to one forty for a fishing membership. And down from fifty dollars to forty dollars for a walk-on membership. So really kudos to, um, the pier masters, Dan, um, Tommy Hewitt and, um, and at the end of the year, Seamus. We had him filling in on, on evenings. We actually had someone manning the, the pier out there till midnight on Friday and Saturday nights. I think that's something we're going to try and continue next year. Uh, have a, have a three man or three person rotation out there to have that ability. Beach replenishment, uh, we've had, had a meeting yesterday. I was not able to attend. Might've been this morning. I think it was this morning. Days are blurring together down here. So. Ed Stinson, our city engineer attended with the Army Corps. We hosted the meeting in that, in commission chambers. For Longport, Margate, Atlantic City and of course Ventnor. The Army Corps was there. They allowed two representatives from each community to come. I had anticipated being there, but being out of town, I was not able to do that. They are going to start with the surveying work, um, in the next couple of weeks. Probably by the end of next week. So you'll see that weird tripod thing going out into the water. You'll see a boat in and out of that area doing sonar. Uh, what they're doing is mapping the sea, seabed and the contour of the beach. That will determine how much sand they will place there and contour those areas. All of our work will happen from Harvard Avenue south towards Margate. It's west, but everybody thinks it's south. So I'll go with the consensus. So that, that work will entail mostly resloping the face of the dunes, repairing walkovers. What it will also include north of the pier or, or east of the pier will be a replacement of the concrete ramp and, and crossover at Suffolk Avenue. Their last beach replenishment damaged that by cracking it. Pretty significantly. So Ed was successful in, in getting that done for us by the Army Corps.
Great.
At no cost to the city. Some of the, the sand replenishment for the dunes and the contouring of the beach. That we will have to pay our share of and we'll get that number once they know that volume of sand. That, that'll be used on the beach. So. It's good that it's happening now. I, I saw some comments on, on our post that it was going to start. And they were complaining that it wasn't going to be in the spring, you know, after the storms. The idea of beach replenishment and dunes is to protect us from those storms. But to have them occurring now, so they're, they're there in place during our winter storms and our nor'easters. Is better than waiting until the spring, uh, instead of then when, you know. Protection might be depleted. You know, they're going to erode. That's what they're there for. They are there to absorb storm surge and storm waves. And they're going to erode and that's what this process does. Uh, that's been in place since the early two thousand. I think oh two was the first time. So that's all I have. I know that was a mouthful, but sorry.
That's okay.
I, I think it's important Lance and I think that, uh, there's some early criticism already about the doom project and that. People have to understand that we pay twenty-five percent of the total share, correct? We don't pay the entire amount.
Uh, we share, so DEP pays a chunk and then we pay a, a smaller chunk. I, I'd have to check the numbers with Ed, but it's a percentage.
But the, the, the idea that, uh, beaches with dunes and beaches with, and, and cities with extended beaches suffered less loss. In events like Hurricane Sandy, that is, that's the reason. And yes, they're going to erode, but they're there to protect infrastructure and cities and homes. And the, the calculus is pretty clear that it's easier to lose sand than it is to lose infrastructure. As much as most likes it.
Used a bad word, calculus.
It's important to, before to understand it, but it, I mean, that's what they do. They, they look at a, at the loss, uh, you know, cost. Ratio and, and it's a protection for the, for the public. Yeah. Anyway, thank you Lance. I would suggest people look at, at the, um, at Dr. Farrell's work on this at the, at the coastal research center right here at Stockton. It's, uh, it, there's a lot of good, a lot of good knowledge out there about why these dunes and, and replenishment protect us.
Agreed.
Lance, while you were speaking about the pier, there was someone in the chat room named Marcus who indicated that the fishing pier was a grand slam.
I just saw that.
I, I. Your sentiments are shared apparently.
I, I gotta say, and I know Tim worked hand in hand with Sash and, and the builders. Weatherby and, and those guys just did, they went above and beyond. And there was a, there was a design change. With to put that, that E-Pay slats in. That made the building.
Absolutely.
Made the face of that building.
Absolutely. I can't imagine it without it now.
No, it just, it really adds to that look. I want to do something on the other side now to, to, to liven that up, you know, the, the north side of it.
And that was strictly on the fly. That's why when you have a good contractor that elevates the design when it comes to execution. He said, you know, it's going to look, it's going to look plain. It's going to look bland with all this plastic. Why don't you let me try this? He built one himself in the shop, brought it over, looked at it, approved it and, and it was, uh, you know, it's a gorgeous addition to an already. It's just a pleasure to see that building get such a, a great review from the public and see it being used. It's still in good shape, not after the first rust, rusty here and there, but. Oh, that, that was a good thing. The, the, the pier cans are, are a great addition too. Love them. No, they're, they're really nice. We, we, we watch them to, to see what the, what it's like, where the, where the tide's at and how many people are there before we go down. It's great. It's a great addition.
That's how I'm getting my Ventnor fixed right now.
Yep.
Yeah, they're working out good. They're working out really well.
You guys.
We're looking at your tweaks out there. So.
You good guys?
Yep.
Jim?
All done. Yep.
Okay. Just a few things. I had the great pleasure of touring the movie theater yesterday. I think Commissioner Crebel and Commissioner Langrea had, had, have opportunities all along the way, but I went in, um, Clint was here. And I, I can't even describe it. It is absolutely magnificent. It is a class. Act that building. It's, it's just beautiful. And, um, I think they're looking for November. He showed me everywhere there's, I mean, chandeliers. It's just not, I mean, the, the big theater where the stage for like live performances. The chair, everything. It's just beautiful. It is just classy. I, I, I mean, it's really gonna. I know people are excited to get in there, but I think once they get in there, they're, uh, they're going to be totally wowed. So that's one thing.
Do you have your reserved seat in the balcony?
Well, I actually asked for a key so I could. Fly.
Oh, don't be shy.
Um, yeah, the balcony, it, it's beautiful. It's just absolutely beautiful. It's breathtaking.
It's, that's a home run. I mean, uh, that, that's such a great benefit for Ventnor and the citizens and the city.
The color comes goes, the way he kept. Parts of the old building, the ceiling, it's just, it, it's just. It's just a story to tell. I'll put it that way. So. The other thing I just wanted to make, uh, make mention, um, which I'm sure the commissioners are aware, but. But I don't know how we're going to maybe try to get our pulse on things. Um, the school could be one venue. But I know, um, I think there's a lot of second homeowners that are, are going to stay here. There, um, I also know that people, um, the houses in Ventnor, if they go on the market, they are being sold with less than two weeks. And that's not real estate information. That's personal. My parents sold their house. My aunt. It wasn't on the market. It wasn't on the market a week. So, um, and if you talk to people and I actually ran into, uh, someone saying they, they visited here for years. They're from New York and they are now buying and they're staying here. So, uh, I don't know if the commissioners or anyone else on our team has heard, but it seems like a lot of people are. Looking to leave certain areas and one, I think they in New York and making. New Jersey and Ventnor their permanent residents. So I think we just need to have a pulse on that because our staffing and, and public safety and public works and things like that. Just so we, um, you know, we know with the summer, population goes well up to thirty thousand, but. The off season is ten thousand. So it's just something that I don't know how we're going to gauge it, but it's food for thought that we need to probably. Try to figure that out. I, I, I know we can check with the school. I think Lance, you told me Margate has like twenty-two additional children this year.
Got a few.
Right?
They've got, I don't know twenty-two, but they've got a few.
Yeah, somebody twenty-two. If it wasn't you, somebody else.
I know there's a bump there, but. We can look at it from, we'll, we'll, we'll see through, you know, public works. We'll see the, the volumes of sewer and water.
Right.
Yeah.
The usage and, and the, and the flow back. So we'll see that. PD, public safety will see it. From the number of, of, uh, people that are in, in town and, and the number of calls. We're. You know, and, and it's happening all over the, all over our region.
Yeah, absolutely.
The residents of, of Philadelphia and New York City are trying to get out of those cities. You know, for their health and they're looking at, you know, homes down here, especially in the New York market. And the, and LBI and, and Long Island, you know, we're a bargain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're, we're a bargain. It's another hour south for them or hour and a half south for them.
Right.
Yep. Yeah, the houses, they're not on the market and, and that's. Within two weeks, less than two weeks, they're selling. They go, they go up and they're, and they're sold. It's fast. So, um. All good and silver lining, I guess, through the pandemic and, um. We're, um, we're going to keep going in the direction that we've been going in for, uh, four years. So. I, I mean, it's, it's good to know that our real estate is moving that quickly. And I think that's all I have. So now I will ask for a motion to open to the public. This is where anyone can speak on any topic. Please try to limit to, to a reasonable amount of time. I think it was a couple of meetings ago. There was like a. A, a tag team of people on the same subject and they brought it up over and over and over again. And that's not the purpose of this meeting. If you, if there's a real issue that, uh, the commissioners and myself are always available to meet, you just have to call our office and we can schedule something. So it's more of a tidbit, um, for the public, not a, um. A meeting between people. Anyway, so do I have a motion to open to the public?
They're moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If anybody from the public wishes to speak on any items, please make note in the chat. Area or by raising hand and you will be recognized.
Anyone?
Nope, I'm not seeing anyone.
Great. Do I have a motion to close public comment portion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We don't have an executive session. Am I correct? Okay. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Great seeing you back, Mayor.
Welcome back.
Yes. Have a great weekend and Lance, I hope things work out with your dad.
Thank you very much.
I, I didn't hear what.
I just, it was great seeing you back on the dates.